Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Bay of Maloney and Moore's Premium, Antay, Colorado. The acronym is ANPAC, the Chief Judge of Consular Court. Today is Class 134, Class 134. What did we learn in Class 133? Well, you know, we really started talking about unfortunately, you know, the conspiracy that Mohammed V and United States did, you know, between the years of 1958 to 1959, right? What were they trying to do, right? In an act of partial genocide, i.e. a crime against humanity, they were violating the Moors' human rights to proclaim themselves and declare themselves as Moroccan nationals, right? But as we already know, no one can stop you from proclaiming who it is, distinctly who you are, right? No one can deny you your nationality, right? And definitely can't deny your nationality because they're doing something on paper. Paper cannot deny your blood pedigree, especially when they're trying to do something regarding genocide, right? So this is what the Moors have to take away from Class 133. Don't worry about what Mohammed V and United States did. Why do I say that? Well, they already know that they were breaching international law. Think about the dates. In 1958 and 1959, when the United States and Mohammed V were drafting so-called a memo to deny the Moors their nationality, what type of nationality? Moroccan nationality, that's your origin, that's your particular nationality, right? Think about those days, 1958, 1959, when that took place. What took place prior to that in 1945? Well, the Charter of the United Nations came out. And within the provisions of the Charter itself, Article 1, Article 55, and Article 73 automatically gave the indigenous people their human rights and their right to self-determination. That was already set forth as well-set up principles in the Charter itself, right? That's 1945. What happened in 1948? The Universal Declaration of Human Rights came out, right? So everybody, Article 15, has a right to a nationality, right? So you can look at the Universal Declaration of Human Rights and look at Articles 2, 5, 8, 10, and 15. Look at those five articles, and you will see that what the United States and Mohammed V did as member states of the United Nations, they were both member states. Keep in mind Mohammed V became a member state in what year? 1956, right? So when they became a member state, they had to also recognize international law regarding the Charter, Article 1, 55, and 73, that gave indigenous people a right to self-govern. But then the Universal Declaration of Human Rights came out in 1948, and Mohammed V and United States of America had to recognize human rights, right? So like I said, Moors, you go back and look at Articles 2, 5, 8, 10, and 15, study it, and you'll see that Mohammed V and the United States knew they were breaching international law. What else came out in 1948? The Convention on the Prevention and Punishment on the Crime of Genocide, 1948. So everything that the United States and Mohammed V did in 1958 and 1959, they already knew retroactively they were violating the periphery rights, the just cogent rights, the human rights, the self-determination rights of the Moors. In other words, what they were doing was a conspiracy to genocide the Moors, as well as it was what, an act of what? A crime against humanity, a human rights violation, you see? So don't worry about Mohammed V. Don't worry about the United States because we're gonna deal with them later down the road. What do we focus in on right now? We focus in on enforcing all of our contracts. What's the first contract that we as Moors should be trying to enforce? We gotta recognize ourselves. See, Mohammed V and the United States didn't want you to recognize who you are. So what's the best form of revenge? Or what's the best way to get back at someone? Is your success. Prove to them that you know who you are, you're gonna stand on that, that you're Moroccan, and you start enforcing your own declaration of self, which is you know that you're Moroccan. But then that's an abstract, right? Now it needs to do what? It needs to manifest into what? A constitution. This is what Article 73 of the Charter talks about. Constitution may require, right? We'll talk about that today, right? So Moors gotta go back and read the Charter. This is what Barack H. Obama and the mayor of Chicago, Ron, what's his name?
Ronnie Emanuel.
There you go, right? Ronnie Emanuel drafted for the Moors to say, "Go back and read the Charter." This is what Obama was trying to get the Moors to do. He was doing this in the year 2009. Think about what was happening in 2008 and 2009. The whole entire housing market was collapsing. The United States was losing between 600,000 to 800,000 jobs per month in the year 2009. In the year 2009, but what's on Barack H. Obama's mind? Colonialism of these Moors. So he's trying to pass what? Universal Health Insurance, that they call Obamacare. And at the same time, Obama's looking out for the Moors to say, "You need to go back and look at the Charter." During the time when the United States was doing really bad, he still had the Moors on his mind. You gotta understand what I'm saying to you right now. Why is that? Barack H. Obama was the Senator of Illinois. You gotta remember that. He was the Senator of Illinois from 2007 until the year 2005. He knew about the Moors. He came from the same location where the Moors Science Temple was, as a senator. As a senator, he dealt with what? Legislation. So he understood, okay, these Moors looking for some laws, they're looking for protections. He knew all about the Moors. Then after that, Barack H. Obama became the Senator of the United States, one of the sitting senators of Illinois at the United States, right? All the way up until what? 2008, when he became the President. So if he became Senator of Illinois in 1997 up until 2005, then he became Senator at the United States on behalf of Illinois, right? Basically from 2005 until 2008. What do senators do at the United States? All they deal with is what? Treaties. And the appointment of federal judges. That's the main one-two punch that senators of the United States do. They deal with treaty language. So now in 2008, he leaves the Senate, understanding how the Senate's operating, dealing with treaties. And he becomes President, 2008, President-elect. Then he takes his office, 2009, and he goes right in and starts talking about the colonialism of Moors. Signs the rights of indigenous people on behalf of who? Moors. He didn't do that for Indians. He went to Cairo, Egypt to talk about who? Muslims. Well, that's code for who? Moors. Because he knew that Moors say they're Muslims, right? He didn't come back and write nothing for Indians because Indians already got treaties with the United States. Indians already enforcing their treaties. So he didn't go to Cairo, Egypt, talk about Indians. Indians ain't the indigenous people of the land. They're Native Americans. So they're saying they're Americans as well. Anybody who claims to be American is claiming to come under the protections of the United States of America's government. You gotta understand what I'm saying. Words matter. Ronnie Emanuel comes out and says, "The Moors are indigenous." Barack H. Obama signs the rights of indigenous people after he started talking about the colonialism of Moors, but he used the code word Muslim. He never talked about Indians. So you gotta understand that this man put a lot on the line just in the year 2009 and 2010. So we can learn a lot from Class 133, right? So let's go ahead and get to the class, right? All the Moors know how to open up the Constitution. Constitution is paramount. What does paramount mean? First, primary. It is the first act of law that the Moors needed in each of the territories. What I mean when I say each of the territories, right? Alabama, Mississippi, right? Louisiana, New Mexico, Nevada. These are territories. Each of the territories need their own constitution. Because you gotta take over the Udi Passe Deas jurisdiction of that territory because the colonists, i.e. the administrative authority, right? You find the word administrative authority in Article 73 of the Charter. Go back and read the Charter. We talked about that today. But Obama said, "Go read the Charter." So each of the territories, the colonists, have a little constitution. But it's really a charter, Charter Constitution. So the Moors have to take over each of these little territories, little parcels of land that where we can share power, right? Let's take it to the board. All right, so we're still talking about what? The Charter of the United Nations, Chapter 14, Articles 92 to 96, which is about what? The International Court of Justice, right? We're still going over the case of the ICJ of France versus United States of America of 1952. But so far, we've covered what since Class 130, right? Let's do a little quick recap, right? Okay, drop-down box. Number one, what have we gone over for the most part, right? From Class 130 through Class 133, we talked about Moroccan treaties, right? Which is the Treaty of Peace and Friendship of 1787 and 1836. That's a bilateral treaty. And in the case, France versus United States of America, they also talked about what? The Treaty of Madrid, right? The Madrid Convention of 1880, right? Then they also talked about the Treaty of what? The Act of the Serbs of 1906. These are the main treaties they talked about. Now, did they also talk about the Treaty of Fairs of 1912? Yeah, in the case, they talked about it. Did they talk about the bilateral treaty between Great Britain and the Sultan of Morocco of the year 1856? Yeah, they talked about that in the case. Did they talk about the treaty, bilateral treaty, between Spain and the Sultan of the year 1861? Yeah, they talked about that in the case, right? Did they talk about the multilateral treaty of 1863? France, Spain, Great Britain, they signed a multilateral treaty with the Sultan of 1863? Yeah, they talked about that in the case, right? But why was they talking about these treaties? They were mainly talking about who? These Moors, the proteges and the subjects, Moors' subjects, who have jurisdiction. If the Moors are naturalized, that means now they've been turned into what? Citizens of that particular geographical location. Now they're no longer Moroccan Moors, they're now what? Now they're British Moors, Portuguese Moors, French Moors, right? But they don't put the word "Moors" on the front end. They just call them what? British citizen, French citizen, Dutch citizen, American citizen. All the Moors in this geographical location of the Empire of Morocco are all been naturalized and turned into what? Americans. It's just American, period. Ain't no Moorish American. It's just American on the record of the United States. That's your status. Your political status is a naturalized American. That's what? That's your surname, that's your adopted name, that's your naturalized political status. But the treaty say you must do what? Return to Morocco and pledge your allegiance, your consent. What does consent mean? You gotta sign something. It ain't a verbal decree. Consent means signature. Back to what? The empire. But what about the empire? It's about what? The Moroccan government. That's the Treaty of Madrid, Article 15, Paragraph 1. So these treaties are very important. What we went over in Class 130 up to Class 133, we talked about treaties because the treaties talked about the proteges and subjects because the colonists is fighting over who has jurisdiction over the Moors. Then we also talked about what? The fact that the United States ended up with a limited Consular Court jurisdiction over the Moors. Then they turn around in 1956 and they what? Relinquished it. Because they said, "Now, we just gonna consider these Moors as being Americans." Why did they say that? Because number one, they didn't want Moors to find out they're Moroccan. And number two, the Moors run around themselves saying they're the true Americans. Why was they saying that? Why do the Moors keep saying they're Americans? Because J. Edgar Hoover pumped all the Moors after 1929. After Noble's gone, the FBI came in and broke up the entire Moors Science Temple and told them, "All of y'all are Moorish Americans. All of y'all gonna be Americans, and we don't wanna hear crap about your independence." So now, generation after generation, for 95 years since Nobu Drahli been gone, all the Moors keep saying they're the true Americans. Because of what the FBI did to the Moors. "We're not Americans. Never have been, never will be. That's your adopted name. You got every right to go back to your true indigenous particular origin to say you're Moroccan. You got a right to do that." Okay, what else we've been learning? Okay. So number three, we learned about what? Moroccan laws and regulations are binding on the United States. The United States was saying, "Well, these Moors gotta get permission to enforce Moroccan laws against us." The ICJ say, "No, they don't. They don't need your prior permission, i.e. the Moors don't need your assent, A-S-S-E-N-T." That means prior permission. See, the ICJ is rejecting the United States. All of their so-called legal arguments got rejected. But then the ICJ turns around and says, "But these Moors are acting as if they call themselves Americans. So we gotta let the United States maintain at least a limited temporary Consular Court." And the United States turned around and said, "Ain't none of these Moors claiming to be Moroccan, so why do we need Consular Court?" So they got rid of it. They relinquished it. They waived their rights to have a Consular Court. There is no more Consular Court. After 1958, there was no more Consular Court. 56, I mean, 56 when they relinquished it. There was no more Consular Court from 1956 until when? February 28, 2021, when ANPAC signed their constitution. And then after they signed our constitution, what do we do next? We became signatory powers, right? Signatory parties became a signatory state to our own Moorish treaties. The only way to enforce Consular Court, you gotta be a party to the contract. So ANPAC became a party to the treaty. And once we became a party to the treaties, we were able to enforce Consular Court. So Consular Court had been vacated for decades until February 28, 2021. And since then, we've had several Moroccan states now to be recognized. And all the Moroccan states now, as of to this date, February of 2024, have their own Consular Courts, you see? The United States waived theirs in 1956. All right, so number four, what else happened? Moors' governments does not have to get prior permission to enforce laws. But what about the enforcement of law? What did we really learn? You gotta catch the sequential order of what was happening, Moors. Listen to me. Class 130, Class 131, Class 132, Class 133 was all building up, but it was a drop-down, more so than building up. What was happening in the case? What was they arguing over at first? France, the United States of America. First, they were arguing on what? The treaties, Consular Court, and the Moors. Then the next thing they argued about was what? The Moroccan laws and regulations. The United States wanted to see because Moroccan laws and regulations are there binding. Because the United States already knew the treaties were binding. Then they wanted to say, "Okay, are Moroccan laws binding as well? Don't we need to..." The United States, like, "Don't we have to approve that we wanted that law to be binding?" ICJ said, "No, it's not the way it works." So the first thing they talked about was treaties. Second thing they talked about, Moroccan laws and Moroccan regulations. That's second, you see? And then they found out that everything is binding against them, especially through what? The Consular Court. Only the Consular Court can ensure, right? That the United States had to adhere to not only the treaties that they put their signatures on, but also to Moroccan law and Moroccan regulations. And that obligation was on the Consular Court to enforce it upon the United States if in fact the United States was not adhering to the Moroccan laws and Moroccan regulations. You see, what are Moroccan laws? That's when the Moors write a bill, right? Through the legislative branch. And then the legislative branch signs said bill, they ratify, they accept it, and they do what? They send it over to what? The executive branch. Then the head of state signs it, ratifies it, into law. But the United States had never signed off on that law. But it's still binding on them. And if they don't adhere to it, then Consular Court has to come and say, "Yes, you have to adhere to this Moroccan law because the United States is located where? In Morocco, Empire Morocco, geographically speaking, right? As well as Moroccan regulations." You see? What are regulations? That's permits, right? That's applications. The Moors come over, the application says, "Okay, this Moor has a right to renounce on this document." That's a regulation. It's regulating what? The law. The laws, you write your laws based upon what? Your treaties and based upon your constitution. Because your constitution what gave you the portal to get access to the treaties, you see? Okay, so now, today, Class 134, what are we going to now? Okay, we're gonna start talking about Moroccan tax laws and collections, right? Now, I know the Moors love to talk about taxes. Lord have mercy, Lord have mercy, Lord of Jesus. But guess what? That's you're gonna learn today. Because I'm gonna work this thing backwards. I'm already telling you on the front end we're gonna talk about taxes. Are we gonna get into the nitty-gritty of the details of it today? No. But I'm already, I'm gonna work it backwards, right? So I'm gonna tell you the end result of, yes, we got a right to collect taxes. I'm gonna prove that. Because the ICJ enforced it. They reaffirmed what the treaty said already. But the United States already knew that. They just throwing stuff up against the wall to see what's sticking. So I'm gonna reaffirm today that, yes, the United States owes taxes to the Moors. They owe taxes according to the treaties. The question is, what's the real question? Here you go. How do we collect it? How do you collect it? And who gets to collect it is the question. The treaty already says that you get to collect it. And the treaty tells you who gets to collect it. We're gonna find out today have the Moors been in the proper status to even collect taxes up to this point. We're gonna talk about that today, okay? So I'm gonna build up to it, right? So first thing I'm gonna say, yes, they owe taxes. That's the end result. But we gotta get back to the origin of how we get an opportunity to collect taxes. Because the key is collection. That's the hard part, isn't it? How do we collect taxes? Well, it starts first with fundamentals. Starts with a base. We gotta talk about the base and the fundamentals first before we can start talking about collecting taxes. Because who gets to collect taxes? Only the sovereign. Who's the sovereign? The state. The state is sovereign. I'll say it again. The state is sovereign. The Empire of Morocco is the state. That's the parent state. The state is sovereign. The treaty say, who gets to collect taxes? The Empire of Morocco gets to collect taxes. That's the state, that's the parent state. That's the external state that gets to collect the taxes. But the government on behalf of said state gets to do what? Put together laws, right? Laws and regulations that now sets up the ability to collect taxes. So you needed a government. So the state is sovereign. Then the state extends a limited sovereignty to the government to act on behalf of said state. And the people vote for their elected officials to operate on behalf of the state. So the republic is the people. And then they set forth a voting status, which is called democracy. It's a democratic process of filling out a ballot. That's what democracy means. You're voting, it's a plebiscite. Based upon any referendum. What's a referendum? Let's say we wanna vote on whatever initiative that we need to vote on. Well, first, you gotta put together a referendum, which is the bill or whatever that you're gonna vote on. Then you go and vote on it. So you gotta understand, this is what this is all about. How do we collect taxes? Well, first, we needed a state and we needed a government. Then put together the regulations, the standard operating procedures on how to collect the taxes. But what's the first question in all of that? Who is collecting the taxes? What's the nationality of the people collecting taxes? Well, the nationality is what? Because they're collecting taxes on behalf of what? The Empire of Morocco. So if the land's Morocco, then the people have to be what? Moroccan. How the hell you gonna be trying to collect taxes as the American? And you trying to collect taxes on other Americans? That don't make no sense. Because who's sovereign? I'm asking the question again. It's the state. Only the state can collect taxes. The taxes is owed to who? The state. The state is a person in international law. Yes, it's an artificial person? Yes. Is it abstract? Yes. But in law, the state is sovereign. And extends sovereignty to who? The officers of the state. So they can set forth reform to collect the taxes. But if the people don't have the same nationality of the state, then those people cannot be the common authority of said state. Because the mother don't recognize you if you ain't one of her own. You ain't family. It's a family business. You understand what I'm saying? Let's continue. All right, so the Moors know, like I said, we're going over the Charter of the United Nations. Because your brother Barack H. Obama tried to get the Moors in the year 2010 when he signed the rights of indigenous people. Go read the Charter because the rights of indigenous people talks about the Charter. We'll talk about that today, all right? Okay, so right here, like I said, what do we have up here right now? It's Chapter 14 about the International Court of Justice. Article 92 talks about the principal judicial order. The United Nations is the International Court of Justice, right? Okay. Right now, we're going over this case. Good brother Joseph, from the top.
International Court of Justice. Reports of judgments, advisory opinions, and orders. Case concerning rights of nationals of the United States of America in Morocco. France versus the United States of America. Judgment of August 27, 1952.
All right, so let's pick up where we left off. All right, so we were on page 203 of the judgment, right? And 203 was talking about what? Moroccan legislation, right? Which is what? Moroccan laws. That's legislation. The legislators create Moroccan laws. The treaty is also a form of Moroccan law, but treaties require what? Signatures. Without a signature, the treaty is not enforceable. Now, can you take your name off a treaty? Yeah. But guess what? If you took your name off the treaty because you trying to avoid, right? The principles of the treaty, right? The purpose and intent of the treaty was to maintain what? Some form of peace. Treaties are about peace. You turn around and take your name off the treaty, that means you're not trying to maintain the principles of peace and security. So guess what happens? Just in case you take your name off a treaty, that don't mean that treaty's not binding on you anyway if in fact there's provisions in said treaty that maintains peace. And now you're doing what? You're invoking some type of bad actions, right? You're a bad actor. You're operating in bad faith that now does something that's contrary to the treaty that you took your signature off. Guess what? ICJ and the Consular Court still won't hold you accountable to the provisions of that treaty because the treaty was maintaining peace. Now you took your name off of it. You become a belligerent. Guess what? That treaty's still gonna be enforceable. But listen to this. Moroccan treaty has language. But all the Moors have to do is do what? If any colonist took their name off the treaty, what do you do next? You convert that language to the treaty into what? You immerse it to what? Moroccan law. So you take that same language from the treaty, you put it into a bill, you pass it through the House, over to the legislative branch, you put it and create what? A Moroccan legislation. You create Moroccan laws that has the same language as the treaty had. See, the colonists can't get out of it. We're briefly talking about that today as to why did the United States keep their name on all of these treaties all these years? Has it ever dawned on the Moors? Why do they still got their names on these treaties? Has it ever dawned on the Moors, why do they still got their names on these treaties? If they know these treaties is, is, is so enforceable against them? See, there's pros and cons as to why the United States kept their name on a treaty. We'll, we'll briefly talk about that today. All right? Let's jump on in. So like I said, we're on page two oh three about Moroccan legislation, which is different than a treaty, right? Okay, scroll on down. We're gonna start talking about taxes, right? The Moors love to talk about taxes, but you over the next couple of classes, you're gonna learn a lot more about taxes, and you may or may not like what you hear as Moors. Especially Moorish Americans, you're gonna learn something about what your Moorish American teachers didn't teach you. I'm gonna expose it. All right? We're here to learn. Okay? Now, let me say this on the front end, because I need to say this before we get started. Today, I'm gonna share information that a lot of Moors are sensitive, and when I start speaking my truth, that sometimes the truth hurts. But, but if we're not, if we're not the type of adult that can handle the truth, then, then we shouldn't even be interested in, in this information. Why you run around and you wanna decolonize and you wanna hate the white man, but you don't wanna hear the truth on what first we did wrong as a people? See, the problem with the Moors when they say the Moors are sensitive, you know what that means when they say Moors are sensitive? That means the Moors can't handle the truth, because the truth hurts. But only truth gonna set us free, that way we don't keep repeating the mistake. So, so me, as, as Jay Bay, through an impact study session, keeping in mind, impact study session is an educational platform. I'm here to tell the truth, and sometimes I have to expose things that are not favorable against Moors, but that's the problem. Moors don't like it when you turn the mirror on them and say, look at the mirror at yourself. But Noah Jaleel said, do what? Study yourself. So I studied the Moors, I studied myself, and I turned around and tell the Moors where we all, including myself, made mistakes. I made a lot of mistakes the first two or three years that I was in the Moorish American movement. And I'm thankful that I went through it, I experienced it. Now, looking back on it, I see where I made my mistakes, because hindsight is always twenty-twenty. Now I've come to the realization that I can't trust nothing that a Moorish American says. It's what you call trust, but verify. Every time I go back and try to verify something, I can't verify it. So I turned around and exposed it to all the Moors and say, I went to do the research, and unfortunately, what the Moors are sharing is commonly known as propaganda. What does propaganda mean? That means you giving out misinformation. Right? You giving out information that causes harm to other people knowingly or unknowingly. The Moorish Americans are teaching propaganda, which is not favorable to none of the Moors. So I'm gonna talk about that today. I don't mean no harm, I'm not trying to attack no one, I'm not trying to talk down to anyone, not trying to chastise anyone, I'm just trying to share the realization that we made a lot of mistakes, including myself, when I was a Moorish American. So I'm guilty of the same things I wanna talk about today. I ain't innocent. But I'm willing to course correct. That's, that's the thing. It's one thing to make a mistake, but what's the real mistake? Repeating it even though somebody pointed out to you that you're making a mistake. That's when you enter into what? Cogit to dissonance. Because you wanna hold on to that belief after someone showed you the truth. This is what they say, they tell the people, you're stuck on stupid, right? I know that seems like a negative terminology, but it technically isn't, because it's just a word such as asinine. It's asinine for people to get stuck on things they know is not true, but they won't hold on to it anyway. So we're gonna talk today, all right? Because we family, right? Now, with the word family, when I say we family, what do I mean? We're all Moors. But you gotta understand something about impact study session as an educational platform. I didn't come here to make no friends. I'm not looking for no friends. What am I looking for? My family. Where the heck are the Moroccans? I'm looking for my family. I'm, I'm looking at lost and found for family, and every time I find a Moroccan, I say, come on home. That's my family. The problem is the Moorish Americans don't realize they're actually Moroccans, but yet they know they're Moroccans, but they keep saying they're Americans. Well, guess what? Americans are not my family. Only Moroccans. So I didn't come here to make friends or look for friends, I'm looking for my family. So if you're Moroccan, come on home. And we can all get together and talk about what we need to do to govern the great enterprise, commonly known as the Empire of Morocco. So, let's get started. Cheryl? All right. Okay, first things first. We, we, we're gonna open up to talk about some Moroccan taxes, because Moors love to talk about taxes. But what is the first thing you see off the top from the ICJ? What type of taxes is it? Moroccan taxes. Not Moorish American taxes, you ain't collecting, as Moorish American, you ain't collecting taxes? Who has the sovereign authority to collect taxes? Moroccans on behalf of the state. What's the name of the state? Empire Morocco. So the land is Morocco, the people are Moroccan, so you get to collect Moroccan taxes on anybody within your territory. Look what we already learning, already in paragraph number one, I'm just pointing that out off the top, the parties must be known, we're talking about that today. All right, so we're gonna read this first paragraph, and I'm gonna jump around a little bit. Like I said, the Moor is gonna be a little sensitive today, but it's all right, we gonna be all right. Okay, uh, uh, Noah from the top.
The government of the United States of America has submitted a counterclaim, a part of which relates to the question of immunity from, from Moroccan taxes in general, and particularly from the consumption taxes provided by the Sharifian Daher of February twenty-eighth of nineteen forty-eight. The following submissions are presented with regard to these questions. On behalf of the government of the United States. Two, end quote. The treaties exempt American nationals from taxes, except, except as specifically provided by the same treaties to collect taxes from American nationals in violation of the terms of the treaties is a breach of international law.
All right, so just in the first few words, they're talking about Moroccan taxes, right? And they're talking about Americans. The United States of America, the state, that is who, that is your state. Not the United States, the United States is a federal corporation, i.e. an international, intergovernmental organization. So the United States operates locally as a federal corporation. But internationally, they operate as what? An international, intergovernmental organization, right? These are the legal personalities, they got two legal personalities, one domestic, one international. However, at the end of the day, the United States is the representative of who? As a power attorney, they're operating on behalf of who? The United States of America, so they should always sign everything, United States on behalf of the United States of America. Anything other than that will be considered what? Fraud. A false statement. Because the United States is not a state, even by their own definition. All the Moors already know, you can look up United States Code, right? USC three thousand two, section fifteen A. And all the Moors know, the United States already said by their own terms and conditions that the United States is a federal corporation. There's nothing to argue about, there's no question. Right? However, we're not gonna talk about taxes in depth at this time, but I'm opening up to talk about taxes. I'm gonna work it backwards. First, I'm saying, we're gonna talk about taxes. Now I'm already showing you the fact that the ICJ said absolutely, the United States owes taxes. Let's, let's get into it. All right, this right here, what do I have up here? The summary of the judgment, not the full judgment, but the summary of the judgment, right? Okay, uh, Dre.
Case concerning rights of nationals of the United States of America in Morocco. Judgment of twenty-seven August nineteen fifty-two.
Okay, so this is the, this is the summary, not the judgment, the summary, right? So now I'm gonna go down to section six of the summary, all right? We're gonna read section six and section seven from the top.
Number six, by six votes to five, no treaty provides any basis for the claim of the United States to fiscal immunity for its citizens. Nor can such an immunity capitulatory in origin be justified by the effect of the most favored nation clause, since no other state enjoys it for the benefit of its nationals.
Pause. Read again.
By six votes to five, no treaty provides any basis for the claim of the United States to fiscal immunity for its citizens. Nor can such an immunity capitulatory in origin be justified by the effect of the most favored nation clause, since no other state enjoys it for the benefit of its nationals.
Okay, so six is power. Off the top. This, this is the summary, which is the conclusion, that means this has already been what? Ruled on, right? It's been adjudged, it's the final ruling, right? It's now what? Res Judicata. So section six of the summary says, no treaty provides any basis for the claim of the United States to fiscal immunity. They're not immune from what? Taxes. I'm working it backwards, I'm telling you already the result. The United States, right? And the no treaty provides any basis to the claim of the United States to fiscal, fiscal immunity for who? For its citizens. So all the Americans owe taxes to who? The Empire Morocco, the state. And the Moorish government that governs the Empire Morocco, that sets up what? Moroccan law, Moroccan regulation, that sets up an opportunity to collect what? Moroccan taxes and collections, right? So we're collecting Moroccan taxes, so Moroccan tax on who? Anyone within our territory. You see what's happening? But specifically, ICJ is being what? Precise. In this case, geographically speaking, they're talking about the citizens of the United States. But then guess what they turn around and say? You gotta catch it. Okay, from the top. No treaty provides any basis for the claim of the United States to fiscal immunity for, for its citizens. Nor can such an immunity capitulatory in origin be justified by the effect of the most favored nation clause. Listen. Since no other state enjoys it for the benefit of its nationals. Wait, timeout, what are you talking about? Oh. Most favored nation clause was about who? Everybody that was a signatory empower to the Act of Al-Dosaras and all other Moroccan treaties. So geographically speaking, guess who else is in the Empire Morocco? Canada, Great Britain, right? Wales, Ireland, right? You got Spain, Portugal, France, Denmark, right? Germany, Austria, Hungary, Russia, Italy, the Vatican, uh, Switzerland, right? Netherlands, you name it. All of their nationals, all, all those states that this name also have nationals. And none of those nationals of the entire hemisphere of Europe, and Europe is where? In Morocco. They're not immune from Moroccan taxes. You gotta understand why the vote was so close, you see what the vote is? Check it out. By six votes to five, woo, that was close. The five states was like, that, that said, no, these Moors can't collect taxes. They were like, man, y'all know what y'all doing? You six judges who saying yes, y'all know these Moors wake up, they gonna be there and collect taxes? And those six judges said, duh, that's what the what? The treaty says. And the Europeans agreed. And just because you took your name off the treaty, don't mean nothing, because the Moroccan laws are also binding, so when the Moor say, yeah, you still owe taxes, even if you took your name off the treaty. Why? Because all of those aforementioned states I mentioned are what? In Morocco. And all agreed in the treaty that all of their states belong to who? The Sultan of Morocco. You gonna look up what? The Treaty of Madrid of eighteen eighty. Article what? Seven, paragraph two tells you, all the states belong to the Sultan. That's in the treaty, they signed it. They agreed. You can go look at the Treaty of Thessalonians nineteen twelve, article three also reaffirmed in nineteen twelve. The Europeans all agreed that all the states, plural, belong to the Sultan. And all them recognized the fact that France had jurisdiction over the entire empire. That the states still belonged to His Majesty, the Sultan. Therefore, all the states belong to who? The Empire Morocco, because the Sultan is sitting in a seat on behalf of the state. So all the states of the Europeans belong to the parent state of the Empire Morocco, and that's the truth, and they knew it. So all of a sudden, six judges said, read the treaty. You'll find what the judges saying no, and I know why y'all saying no, because you think these Moors are subjugated. But the treaty don't say, if the Moors are subjugated, you don't owe the taxes, that language is not in the treaty. So that's why the vote was so close, six votes to five, you gotta see, you gotta see what's happening. Keep in mind, I said from class one thirty, this is all about the judges. This is really not about France versus United States of America. We're really talking about the justices of the peace. At the Peace Palace in Netherlands, at the head is about these fif- fifteen judges sitting there. So you gotta understand, this is about judges making these decisions. And it was a close call. And because of that, it became rare to the collar that all European states, even if they took their name off the treaty, Moroccan law can still enforce taxes, because all the Europeans are still in the Empire Morocco. Section seven. Brother Dre.
Seven, by seven votes to four, as to the consumption taxes imposed by the Daher of February twenty-eighth nineteen forty-eight, these are payable on all goods, whether imported into Morocco or produced there. They are not, therefore, customs, customs duties, the maximum, the maximum rate for which was fixed at twelve and a half percent by the signatory powers of the Act of Al-Dosaras. Citizens of the United States are no more exempt from these taxes than from any others.
Read again.
By seven votes to four, as to the consumption taxes imposed by the Daher of February twenty-eighth nineteen forty-eight, these are payable on all goods, whether imported into Morocco or produced there. They are not, therefore, customs duties, the maximum rate for which was fixed at twelve and a half percent by the signatory powers of the Act of Al-Dosaras. Citizens of the United States are no more exempt from these taxes than from any others.
So the United States citizens are not exempt from taxes. Then they turn around and said, and these others. Who are the others? Well, they mentioned that in paragraph six, of the nationals. Of the nationals what? Of the other European states. Do you see what the ICJ is doing? They are reaffirming the language of the treaty. And they're reaffirming Moroccan laws are also binding. What else is binding? Moroccan what? Regulations that set up what? Opportunity for collections of taxes. But the question is, who can collect taxes? What's your nationality? Because the Empire Morocco for Moroccans, and that's why it's expressive Moroccan tax. And if you ain't Moroccan, you can't collect no taxes. Listen. You see this highlighted area in blue? Remember I said, we're gonna go with this, we're gonna gloss it real quick, we're gonna gloss it. I said, why is the United States still keeping their name on these treaties? When they know these treaties have pros and cons of how these Moors gonna be there and enforce these treaties against the United States? The United States is smart, let me just say that for the record. They're very smart. See, they was thinking fifty years ahead. Seventy-five years ahead. A hundred years ahead. And they said, okay. If we leave our names on the treaties, then guess what happens? The nineteen oh six Act of Al-Dosaras did what? It locked in what? Rates. You see that? Fixed at twelve percent, fixed. Let me read the sentence. The max, the max, maximum rate- Let me read the sentence, the max, the max, maximum rates for which was fixed at twelve percent, talking about a particular tax, twelve percent. So in nineteen oh six, the rates was locked in through a treaty. So the United States was smart enough to say, you know, if we take our name off the treaty, then the Moors can charge more than twelve and a half percent cause we don't have no language between the two, Ma- America and United, I mean, American Moroccans. If they, if the United States take their name off the treaty, Moroccans can turn around and say, well, we want fifteen percent. But the treaty did what? It locked in rates, fixed rates, such as that twelve percent. That's why the United States kept their names on the treaties, just in case the Moors woke up. Cause they already knew worst case scenario was what? What's the worst case scenario? Cause this is best case. Best case scenario, the rate is locked in at twelve and a half percent, what's the worst case scenario? See, if ICJ, they find out in nineteen fifty-two that Moroccan laws was still binding. So if the United States were taking their names off the treaty, Moors could invoke Moroccan law, say, yeah, we want fifteen percent. Cause you, you took your name off the treaty, isn't that right, the United States? Okay, then we, the Moors ain't bound to that fixed twelve percent, twelve and a half percent no more. So the United States said, man, damn that we do, damn that we don't take our name off the treaty.
Right.
So they locked in the rates since nineteen oh six at twelve and a half percent when the Moors finally wake up. The United States was smart. That was a very strategic move on their part. That's the pros of the treaty for them. What was the cons? Well, they also have to adhere to all one hundred and twenty-three articles of the Act of Al-Dosaras cause they still got their name on the treaty. But at the same time, ain't no certain tax rates were locked in, right? Gotta understand what's happening, okay? All right, now listen. Like I said, who can collect taxes? Only the Empire Morocco, the state. But right now, in February twenty twenty-four, there's no sitting Sultan. And there's no government representing the central or decentralized location of the Empire of Morocco, it's void of a government, the Empire State. Void in February twenty twenty-four. So in the meantime, what's been happening? There's several Moroccan states of the Udi Posidators jurisdiction such as Ampak establish its own state, right? Recognizing itself as what? Operating on behalf of what? Where does Ampak as a state derive its authority? From the Empire Morocco, so it would be the Lord of the Moors, Pretium, Monticolorado is acting what? On behalf of the Empire Morocco, you see that? So the Ampak is operating on behalf of the Empire Morocco for this territory, our geographical location, our latitude longitude. Until we finally have a sitting Sultan that would then establish the three branches of government once again, right? For the Empire State, which is the parent state, the external state, and down here, all the other Moor states are what? Internal. All the Moor states are internal states. They come under the umbrella of the Empire Morocco state, you see? Well, guess who else comes under the umbrella of the Empire Morocco? Okay, see over here, United States and all their states. You see? So in United States of America, the United States and all several states and their counties also come under the umbrella of the Empire Morocco. So all states in the Empire Morocco belong to the Empire Morocco and the Sultan of Morocco as the head of state. You see what's happening? All states. This is very powerful information I'm talking about right now. This is called diplomacy, it's political reforms. How to re-reestablish the empire again. It's like Humpty Dumpty, Humpty Dumpty fell down in pieces, well, we gotta put it back together, it's like a puzzle. So it was surely, but the empire still exists nonetheless. The empire is always constant, even when the people are asleep. The Moors, the Moroccans are walking around suffering from cognitive dissonance, amnesia. But that don't mean the state don't exist, just like the United States of America still exists even though the United States of America don't have a what? Central government, the United States of America is void of three branches of government. But their representative, the United States, has three branches of government as a representative. So Ampak as an example is doing the same thing. The Empire Morocco is void of a sitting government. So Ampak as example gets to operate on behalf of the Empire Morocco, just like the United States is operating on behalf of the United States of America. Cause the United States of America don't have no president, they don't have no legislative branch, they don't have no judicial branch. You see what's happening? Okay, listen. In class one thirty-three, I talked about this. Cause this is important, I'm gonna talk about, this is about the Moors Americas today and the Moroccans. In class one thirty-three, I mentioned this Resolution fifteen fourteen that came out in nineteen sixty, right? October nineteen sixty. So you gotta understand, when this came out, that allowed all indigenous people who have been colonized to declare their independence. But do you catch the word right here? There's another word in here the Moors gotta understand. Brother Dre, can you read the title for me, please?
Fifteen fourteen, Declaration on the Granting of Independence to Colonial Countries and Peoples.
Okay, are y'all catching it already? What's happening? Listen. So Resolution fifteen fourteen comes out, approximately October fourteenth nineteen sixty. It's a declaration. Isn't that Article seventy-three of the Charter? Hold up, pause right there. Let's go to the Charter, Barack H. Obama said, you Moors need to go and read the Charter. Right, you Moors need to read the Charter. Cause the Charter is gonna tell you the answers to the test, right? Barack H. Obama tried to get the Moors to go back to the rights indigenous people to read the Charter, Article seventy-three. Okay, listen. Brother Dre, from the top.
Chapter eleven, Declaration Regarding Non-Sub-Governing Territories, Article seventy-three. Members of the United Nations which have or assume responsibilities for the administration of territories whose peoples have not yet attained a full measure of self-government recognize the principle that the interests of the inhabitants of these territories are paramount and accept as a sacred trust the obligation to promote the utmost within the system of international peace and security established by the present Charter, the well-being of the inhabitants of these territories, and to this end.
Pause, okay, so Article seventy-three of the Charter that Barack, Barack H. Obama and Ron Emanuel tried to get the Moors to read talks about a declaration regarding what? Non-self-governing territories. What's the territory? The land, the latitude longitude of that particular landmass. So you need a declaration, the inhabitants, the indigenous people, the Moors, i.e. the Moroccans needed to declare. Okay, let's go back to Resolution fifteen fourteen. So right here, the United Nations comes out in nineteen sixty. So let's write something specific for these colonized people. So you gotta catch, it's in two parts, watch how it reads. Declaration on the Granting of Independence to Colonial Countries, what's another word for country? State. So in nineteen sixty, the United Nations passed this law, international law that says, it's decoration on the granting, so who was granting? All the member states granted to the colonized people independence of their colonial state, whilst the Empire Morocco was colonized. So it's about what? Territory, and then it said what next? People, now watch how it reads. The Declaration on the Granting of Independence of your land, i.e. your territory. Then it also said, Declaration on the Granting of the people themselves, see, it's two parts. Because you can't have a state without the land, i.e. the what? Territory. So the people have to do what? Declare their independence to the landmass as the people of said land, so the land had to be Morocco in order for you to be Moroccan. And you can declare your independence, so it's independence of the land, i.e. the state, and independence of the Moors, i.e. the Moroccans themselves, two parts, you gotta see what's happening. They didn't say independence only of the people. They said independence of the land and the people, you gotta catch how they're writing. Two parts. Listen, we're talking taxes. We're talking taxes. I'm working it backwards, right, from backwards, now we're, we're going back to origin. Where do they need to start? In order for you to get to a point where you could collect? Where does it start? Cause I told you the end, yes, they owe taxes, but let's get back to the origin, where does everything start? It starts with your nationality of the people. Recognizing the land as being Moroccan. Moroccan, I should say, Moroccans recognizing the land being Morocco. That's the origin, nationality. Then recognizing the land, the government, enforcing your treaties, Moroccan law, Moroccan regulations, in order to get into collections of what? Taxes. You'd never get there if you don't start with nationality first. We're gonna talk about that today. We gotta talk about some things. So in the Act of Al-Dosaras of nineteen oh six, that's what I got up here on the board, chapter four. Good brother, uh, uh, Joseph K., you read the title?
A Declaration Concerning a Better Turn of Taxes and the Creation of New Revenues.
All right, so that's the title of the Act of Al-Dosaras, chapter four. Trust me, the United States hates this, cause they don't like to pay taxes, they need one to pay taxes to Great Britain, much less to some Moors, right? Yet they signed this treaty in nineteen oh six. They consented, they acquiesced, right? They ratified, deposited, and promulgated this treaty. Now they owe taxes, and the ICJ reaffirmed in nineteen fifty-two. But who gets to collect taxes though? Okay, let's go down to Article sixty-two real quick, as, as a snapshot. Okay, Article sixty-two, watch this. Article sixty-two, I'm talking to the Moors Americas right now, talking to the Moors Americas. Okay, Brother Dre, Article sixty-two.
Article sixty-two. His Sherifian Majesty having decided in nineteen oh one that the Moors officials who collect the agricultural taxes should no longer receive either the sakra or the muna. The conference is of the opinion that this rule should be made general so far as is possible.
Pause, thank you very much, okay, what's germane here? Okay, Article sixty-two. His Sherifian Majesty, that's the Sultan. Having decided in nineteen oh one that the Moorish officials who collect the agricultural taxes, who's collecting taxes? The Moors. The Moors government, on behalf of who? The Sultan, but the Sultan sits in a seat on behalf of what? The state, Empire Morocco. So the Empire Morocco, Sultan, Moors government, collecting taxes, is right there in the treaty. Good brother, read again, from here to here.
Article sixty-two, His Sherifian Majesty having decided in nineteen oh one that the Moors officials who collect the agricultural taxes should no longer receive either the sakra or the muna.
Pause. What's germane here? That the Sultan decided that the Moors, who are the officials, the government, who collect the agricultural taxes, but wait. Who are the Moors officials? What's their nationality? Cause Moorish is an adjective, a part of speech. But what's the real nationality? Okay. Moroccan. See, it's in French, France puts it Moroccan. Francis being precise. So Moroccans are the officials. For the word, your trade, Moorish and Moroccan are equivalent when it comes to these two different languages, you see? But the nationality is Moroccan, Moorish is an adjective, but the word Moors in there too, cause the word Moors, a standalone word is what? A noun. Moroccan as a nationality is also what? A noun. Moorish as a standalone word is an adjective that describes the Moor. You see? But France put the nationality Moroccan, so who's collecting taxes? Moroccan taxes are being collected by Moroccan officials. I'm talking to Moors Americas right now. Did it say Moors Americas can collect taxes? No. You gotta understand what's happening here. Did it say America should be collecting the taxes? No. This is treaty, treaty supreme law of the land. And it set forth certain procedures of who's collecting the taxes? The Moors officials, who are Moroccan in nationality, I'm talking to Moors Americas right now. Why am I talking to Moors Americas? Why? Cause you've been hoodwinked, bamboozled, and led astray that your nationality is Moorish American, that's a lie. We're talking about that today. Matter of fact, let's get into it now. Cause all the Moors wanna collect taxes, but who can collect taxes? Only Moroccans. Listen. Oh, what do we have here? In class one thirty-three, we started talking about this letter that Ron Emanuel, the mayor of Chicago, wrote twenty eleven, twenty twelve. And we talked about this proclamation. Ron. This proclamation from the mayor. And I started breaking it down because I said Moors can't read. What does read mean? It means to comprehend and use forensics. What I learned is Moors can't read, you know what Moors do? They skim. And when they skim, you know what they do? They assume, cause they don't know the definition of the words. They don't see the coded messages in the synthesis. They don't see the coded messages in the paragraph. Remember, I've always told the Moors, words create sentences. Sentences create paragraphs, and paragraphs create contracts. And if you don't understand the words, then you don't understand the sentence. If you don't understand the sentence, you're not gonna understand the paragraph, therefore you won't understand the contract. And this is why the Moors have been failing for decades, cause you don't understand contract law. Ampak study session is a contract law study session. So we're gonna break this down a little bit more today, I gotta spend some time on this because I'm looking for my family, I ain't looking for no friends. I'm looking for my family. And I'm trying to tell my family, we, we've been hoodwinked, we've been led astray by these so-called Moors American leaders. Let's talk about it. I love everybody, let's get into it. What's happening? Look how Ron Emanuel opened up. Says, whereas the Moors Americans are the descendants of the ancient Moabites. I'm gonna read again. Says the Moors Americans are descendants of the ancient Moabites, what's wrong with that sentence? See, all the Moors been studying these things, they're called the one-on-ones, right? Listen. Library of Congress, reference point. Library of Congress, where these Moors Americas put this document, that's why I got my reference point from. Right here, the one-on-one, it said what? Question twelve says what? What is his nationality of Nobodraw Lee? Moors American? Question thirteen, what is your nationality? Moorish American? Said that's a nationality. Wait a minute. Uh-oh, timeout. Listen. I transferred some of the one-on-one questions into this word doc. Just a handful of questions. So question thirteen was, what is your nationality? Response, Moorish American. Question fourteen, why are we Moorish Americans? Response, because we are descendants of Moroccans! Born in America. Listen. Cause this is the most egregious part. Listen, this is what Moors don't like. They don't like the truth, cause I'm gonna expose the truth. Listen. Question thirty-one. Uh, Brother Joseph, can you read that for me, please?
Thirty-one, what is the modern name for Moabites? Response, Moroccans.
Read it again.
Thirty-one, what is the modern name for Moabites? Response, Moroccans.
Read it again.
Thirty-one, what is the modern name for Moabites? Response, Moroccans.
Okay, let's go back to the mayor's letter. This is what Ronald Emmanuel wrote, and all the Moors got excited. Can you read this first instance again, your brother?
Moorish Americans are the descendants of the ancient Moabites.
Read it again.
Moorish Americans are the descendants of the ancient Moabites.
Hold up. Question thirty, thirty-one. Thirteen. Excuse me.
Thirteen.
Pause. Question thirty-one, read it again.
Thirty-one, what is the modern name for Moabites? Response, Moroccans.
So the Moabites are who? Moroccans. Right? But wait. What did, what did Ronald Emmanuel say the Moabites are? Read it, good brother.
Moorish Americans are the descendants of the ancient Moabites.
You know what that's called? False statement. Because the Moors said in their own questionnaire, question thirty-one, they said the Moabites were who? Moroccans. Ronnie, Ronnie Emmanuel said Moorish Americans were the Moabites. That's not true. Is it Moorish Americans? Tell the truth. That's not what you learned in your question thirty-one? But none of y'all raised your hand and say, uh, this is inaccurate. He should've said Moroccans are descendants of the ancient Moabites. That's question thirty-one. Warrant the Moorish Americans saying this letter is inaccurate. Right off the top. And why did Ronald Emmanuel put in there Moroccan? Cause FBI is watching him. He ain't gonna put the real nationality in there, even though the Moorish Americans, question thirty-one said Moabites are who? Moroccans. Ronald Emmanuel didn't put the nationality in there. FBI is watching him. Cause they know what him and Obama's up to. Why didn't the Moorish Americans say this letter is inaccurate right off the top? Let me explain something to the Moors. This is Atback Study Session. That's learning more, cause I love all the Moors, regardless of your your nominee gear or your misnomer. This is what the Moors should've been learning day one, when you came into your so-called Moorish science lessons. The Moors know that everything's about contracts. Contracts, 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 but none of the Moors would ever learn anything about true enforcement of contracts. The Moors never learned the four basic elements of a contract. I learned these things in mergers and acquisitions. Alright, so I'm gonna teach you contract law, Moors, especially to Moorish American students. Because the Moorish American students are innocent. It's their Moorish American leaders that's lying to the students and not exposing these things to them. So let's first talk about what are the four basic elements of a contract? Okay. Uh, Brother Dre.
What are the four basic elements of a contract? Number one, who are the parties to the contract? Number two, who is superior and who is inferior in the contract? Number three, what are the terms and conditions of the contract? Number four, how do you enforce the contract?
Alright, so what does that mean? This is a very generic, uh, fundamental understanding how to understand contracts. This is how I mastered the reading of contracts. This is how I've been able to deplete my learning curve so quickly about all the mistakes the Moors have made, because I always apply these four elements. I live by these principles. I'm a man of principles. Because you find success when you have structure in your life. And then you're consistent with it. Right? You must have structure. And then you must be consistent. Cause you get a consistent result. So I apply these four principles in everything I read, everything. And it starts to expose everything that's wrong. And it exposes everything that's good. Listen. What are the four basic elements of a contract? Number one, who are the parties to the contract? Okay. And we're talking treaties, bilateral treaty of the Treaty of Peace and Friendship, who are the parties of the bilateral treaty is who? Moroccans and Americans. That's the bilateral treaty that all the Moors know about, Treaty of Peace and Friendship, right? Seventeen eighty-seven, eighteen thirty-six. Then you got multilateral treaties. Who's in the multilateral treaties? You got who? Moroccans, and there's several what? Signatory powers, who are the names of all the states. France, United States of America, right? Germany, et cetera. Twelve signatory powers. But the one thing that's always constant is who? Moroccans, Sultan, Empire Morocco, and the Moors. Everything else has a tendency to change, whether it's bilateral treaty or multilateral treaty. The people on this side of the square table may change depending on bilateral or multilateral, but on this side of the equation of the contract of the square table, it remains the same. It's consistent. What has happened? What changed? The Moorish Americans turned around and created what's called a hybrid. They said we are what? Moroccan Americans. And they say Moorish American, and Moorish means what? Moroccan. So you claim to be both sides of the contract. So right here, box number one, all the Moors have failed just in box number one, cause it says, who are the parties to the contract? Soon you say you're Moorish American, that's a hybrid, that's a fictitious name. It don't exist in the treaty. So therefore, if you fail at box number one, you can't ever get to box number two, cause guess what you just did when you have a fictitious nominee gear called Moorish American? Guess what happened in box two? Box two of the contract says what? Who is superior and who's inferior in the contract? You see what just happened? When you call yourself Moorish American, you just took the what? Inferior position. Cause you don't know who you are. You automatically, by default, acquiescence, tacit acquiescence, just make United States of America superior, because you don't know your proper name in the contract. You just put yourself in an inferior position. While screaming and hollering, thinking you're superior. But you got the wrong name in what? The treaty. Okay, let's go to box three. What are the terms and conditions of the contract? What does terms and condition mean? Well, terms is the words. Now you must know the definition of words. You gotta look up all the words. Why do I say that? Okay, in the Bible, right? I'm not, I'm not a religious person, I'm spiritual. Well, let's talk Bible. What's the first thing the Bible says in the beginning? It says, "In the beginning, there was the Word." "And the Word was with God." "And the Word was God." So what does that mean if that's the first statement in the Bible? You must master words, cause whoever mastered words is God. But God is an acronym for who? Government Ordinance Department. The government controls the words of what? Laws. The government controls the words of treaties. The government controls the words of regulations. And the government controls the fixed rate of collections of taxes. The government does that. So you must master words. Because if you don't understand the terms, that means you don't understand the conditions. Therefore, the Moorish Americans' condition is automatically inferior, cause you don't know your proper party name in the contract. Thus the reason step number four, how do you enforce said contract? More than trying to enforce treaties. You can't enforce the contract, because you're in the wrong party status of the contract. You don't know your party name. So now you're inferior. Cause you, you, you the one under acquiescence created your condition, and you can't enforce the contracts because you're Moorish American, instead of Moroccan. Just with these four basic elements right there, the Moors could've fixed this problem decades ago. If they understood terms, which is words, and those words set up conditions. Words create sentences. Sentences create paragraphs, and paragraphs create contracts, and Moors don't know how to read. What does read mean? To comprehend, to use forensics of what? The words. Listen. So you go back to Ronald Emmanuel's letter. So you say you Moorish Americans are descendants of ancient Moabites, but you know that's a lie, cause your own one-on-one said that the Moabites are Moroccans. But the Moorish American grand sheiks don't wanna talk about the fact that the Moors are actually Moroccans. The grand sheiks have sold out their students, cause they want their students to keep saying they're Americans. They keeping the Moors subjugated, while they're collecting what? Tithing, right? In the form of taxes. Cause you've got an ecclesiastical theocratic government of your little temple, you collecting taxes, i.e. tithing. In your little bubble. Because you the house negro. That's all the grand sheiks are, is the house negros. Who are the field negros? All their students, all their members of their temples. All of the civic moors are also what? House negros. Right? And field negros. Why? Because the ones at the top of the pyramid scheme are the house negros. Whether they civic moor or temple moor, grand sheiks are claiming they run in everything, whether it's the temple or the civic moor. They're all grand sheiks. They didn't fool the Moors to think there's a distinction, and it's not. And all the field negros are the students. But what's the worst part? Both the house negro and the field negro are still colonized people. That's the worst part. Both the temple moors and the civic moors have one common denominator. What is that? They're all saying they're Americans. I.e. colonized people. By your own acquiescence. You're saying that by your own decree. You literally are putting that on your nationality card that you're the Lodeo American. By your own decree. And the magistrates are sitting there laughing at you from the bench, cause you're like, "I'm Moorish American," and the judge's like, "I know." You're, you, you saying your own acquiescence you're American, i.e. you come under what? The local American courts. Sir. Listen. What, what's the problem? Listen. Barack H. Obama tried to tell the Moors. By the way, Barack H. Obama is, is my mans in them. That's my mans in them. I ride with Barack H. Obama. Why? He's the only Moor that's ever done anything for the Moors on an international level. Since good brother Il Malik. Il Malik was the only one operating, i.e. Michael Mace. They, Il Malik was the only one operating on an international level since Nobu Drahli. So Nobu Drahli, Il Malik, Barack H. Obama on an international level. Listen to my words. I'm not talking domestically. Barack H. Obama went to Cairo, Egypt internationally to talk about the Moors treaties. Treaty of Tripoli seventeen ninety-six, out of eleven. Then he comes back and internationally signs off on the rights and conditions people to get the Moors to go read the Daniel Charter, so they can see in Article seventy-three, it's about non-self-governing territories. He was doing this for the Moors. Why? Okay, listen. Let's read this first paragraph. Brother Dre.
The United States Senate career of Barack Obama began on January third, two thousand five, and ended on November sixteen, two thousand eight. A member of the Democratic Party from the state of Illinois, Obama previously served three terms in the Illinois Senate from nineteen ninety-seven to two thousand five. He resigned his seat in the US Senate upon being elected President of the United States.
Pause. Okay, so Barack H. Obama was the senator, right? He was a senator. He was an Illinois senator from nineteen ninety-seven to two thousand five of Illinois. Chicago, Illinois. Guess who claimed to have the number one Moorish Science Temple of America? The Chicago Moors. You don't think Barack H. Obama as a Senator of Illinois wasn't already dealing with Moorish Americans? Way before even he was Senator of nineteen ninety-seven, he was already walking around the blocks of Chicago trying to become Senator. So he's talking to Farrakhan and the Nation of Islam, trying to get the black vote. He talking to the Moorish Americans, trying to get the Moorish American weak, weak nationality vote, this vote of Barack H. Obama. He talking to everybody that claims to be a liberator of the people. You think he didn't know about Moors? Course he knew about Moors. He was a Senator. He was a legislator. Then from there, from Illinois, he goes, he becomes what? He becomes a Senator of the United States, right? Become a Senator of the United States two thousand and five, right? Say, United States, right there. The United States Senate United States Senate career of Barack H. Obama began January third, two thousand five. Now he's left Illinois. Now he's a Senator for Illinois, sitting in the seat of the Senate of the United States. He remained there until what? Until he becomes President when? Two thousand eight, right? He remained there until he became President of the United States. So while he was a Senator of Illinois, he's in acting legislation, he knows about the Moors. Then he becomes a Senator of the United States, and what does the Senate of the United States deal with? Two things primarily. Treaty language and judges. That's it. That's the one-two punch. So he knows all about the treaties, he knows all about the Moors. Then he becomes President. Now he's overseeing all the branches of government. And the first thing he does in the first year of his presidency is go to Cairo, Egypt to talk about the colonized Moors, because he's the Senator from Illinois. Where the Moorish Science Temple is of America. He's known about the Moors. What else about Barack H. Obama? Who was Barack H. Obama's favorite president? Lincoln. Lincoln was Obama's favorite president. He was obsessed with Lincoln. Why? Lincoln was a liberator. Lincoln signed what? In eighteen sixty-three. The proclamation, right? Of emancipation. They did what? Set the Moors, quote-unquote, free. Free from what? From being property of the southern states. The Moors were being treated like three-fifth person, i.e. negroes. Blacks and colors. So he signed the what? Proclamation. But was that a legislative act? No. That was by his own decree. That didn't come from the legislators that came from Lincoln all by himself. He was acting unilaterally. But why? Did Lincoln sign Emancipation Proclamation in eighteen sixty-three? What happened in eighteen sixty-three? The Sultan was signing treaties with France, Spain, and Great Britain to do what? Naturalize the Moors and their territories. In eighteen sixty-three. So Lincoln, under what's called the Most Favorite Nation Clause, was invoking the bilateral language from the Treaty of Peace and Friendship of eighteen thirty-six. Article twenty-four, in the eighteen thirty-six Treaty of Peace and Friendship, gave United States of America right under Most Favorite Nation Clause to also naturalize the Moors. This is why Lincoln was signing the Emancipation Proclamation. Eighteen sixty-three, look it up. So Obama is crazy about Lincoln, cause he see Lincoln signing off on all these documents. Lincoln does what? Thirteenth Amendment. Why the Thirteenth Amendment come out of the United States? Because the other European states was doing what? Making this Moors citizen of Great Britain, making a Moors citizen of Spain, making a Moors citizens of Germany, et cetera. So Lincoln's doing- So Lincoln's doing the same thing. Then he gets assassinated eighteen sixty-five. Andrew Johnson takes over, they create the Fourteenth Amendment, Fifteenth Amendment, Naturalization Act of eighteen seventy. Turns around and says these Moors can now be citizens, the descendants of Africans can be descendants of the United States, or should I say can be citizens of the United States. But they call the Africans what first? Aliens. So they have to strip the Moors of their Moroccan nationality locally with their domestic law. They stripped the Moroccan to say, you're an alien, we don't know your nationality. Now, since you're an alien, now we gonna recognize you as what? American. We're gonna adopt you, adopt you, adopt you as American, that's your last name, now it's your surname. And then the Sultan turns around in eighteen eighty, signs the treaty of eighteen eighty and says what? All the European states have a right to naturalize the Moors, the Sultan signed the contract. That allowed the Europeans to naturalize the Moors, to call the Moors whatever the political nationality was of that territory. Take for instance, the Moors became Americans overnight. They became British overnight, they became Spaniard overnight, Portuguese overnight, German overnight, Russian overnight, Netherlands overnight, Dutch, the whole nine. Because of the Sultan signing the eighteen eighty treaty. Barack H. Obama knew all this. Lincoln was his favorite President. So what does Barack H. Obama do in two thousand nine? He picks up right where Lincoln left off. I'm gonna go to Cairo, Egypt, just like Lincoln did, do what? A proclamation. Regarding the colonized Moors. Because he knows the Moors are all what? Moroccans. Listen. Since Barack H. Obama was already in Illinois, why didn't he do a whole lot for the Moorish Americans there? You know why he didn't do a whole lot for the Moorish Americans? Let me tell you something, Moors, listen. Listen. I know the Moors are sensitive, but listen. This is why he didn't do a lot for the Moorish American temples while he was Senator. Right here. This right here tells you everything, can you read number fourteen, uh, 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 no?
Fourteen, why are we Moorish Americans? Response, because we are descendants of Moroccans and born in America.
You see Barack H. Obama read that, Barack H. Obama knows the four elements of a contract. He said, wait, y'all Moroccans, not Americans, oh, I forgot, you were naturalized, cause Barack H. Obama knows what are all about the treaties, cause he was a Senator. Looking at treaties, he studied Lincoln, he knew about all the treaties. Barack H. Obama was the President of Harvard's. Constitution Committee. He knew the Constitution and the treaties. And he said, you foolish Moorish American grand sheiks, know that you're Moroccans. And you keep saying that you're Americans, but you know that's your naturalized adopted name. And you already saying right here, the prefix, listen. The prefix of this sentence, it says, we are descendants of Moroccans. We are descendants of Moroccans, that's blood pedigree, that's particular origin, that's particular nationality. That's prefix, but then on the suffix, on the back end, the caboose. They say born in America, what does born mean? Naturalized. As Americans, but you ain't really Americans. That was applied to you through the Naturalization Act, and all the Moors know this. You still turn around and call yourself American, why? Because Taj Sri Bay told you. That the word American is what? A corruption of the word Moroccan, okay Taj Sri Bay, the grand sheiks, if America is a corruption of the word Moroccan, then why is you calling the Moors Moroccan? Since you keep saying America's the corruption. Cause you keep saying the word black is the corruption of the word Moroccan. Then you turn around and say America's the corruption of the word Moroccan, but you keep holding on to the word. American. Something ain't right. Something ain't right. The students need to start asking questions. But why else is Barack H. Obama upset? Listen. Remember I said you must study words. You must become a wordsmith, this is why I say Moors can't read. None of the students ever asked the question, for the most part, what's up with this dang on hyphen? What's up with this hyphen? Why is it saying Moors hyphen American? What's that about? Anybody asking any questions? Listen. Now keep in mind, I got this from the Library of Congress. That's my reference point, cause Moors say, oh, man, you made that stuff up on your own. No, this is your stuff. Library of Congress, you said right here that the Moors. Are Moorish Americans with a hyphen, that's your work Moorish Americans. Library of Congress. Listen, that's first. Look up the word Moorish, alright, let's look up Moorish. Moorish is in the Etymology Dictionary, you see I had auto-populated Moorish. Enter. Moorish Etymology. This is how you read, it's called forensics. Okay? Brother Drake from the top.
Moorish adjective.
Pause, read it again.
Moorish adjective.
Read it again.
Moorish adjective.
So Moorish is an adjective, etymology, eight parts of speech. Right? Okay. It's pertaining to who? Brother Drake.
Uh, or pertaining to the Moors.
So it's a pertaining to the Moors, so it's a description, adjective describes. A noun. An adjective describes. A noun, so it's pertaining to the Moors. That's the noun, listen, continue reading.
Mid fifteenth century. Um, Morris, Maurice, Maurice, from more plus ish.
Pause. So now they tell you it's from what? More. So Moorish comes in the word more plus ish. So more is the noun. When you added the ish, it made it adjective that describes what? The noun. More. Wait, let's click on it, let's click on more. More is in the Etymology Dictionary, noun, capital M, proper noun, proper noun, more is a noun. So it's describing the noun, you see? But wait. Let's go deeper, I'm talking to Moorish American students. Because your, your, your grand sheiks ain't gonna teach you this, listen, I know the Moors are sensitive, but listen. When you now go back. And you say, well, what's, what's up with this hyphen? If Moorish is the adjective. That describes what? The noun more. Right? Then they, they put a hyphen American, guess what they just did? Created a compound word. When you create a compound word, you just changed the definition. And usage of that word. So now this adjective is describing what? An American. The Americans what? Noun. So the, the hyphen created a compound word to say this adjective noun describing an American, you see what they just did? United States put a hyphen in this. You ain't asking no questions, listen. Create a compound adjective, listen. This is, uh, Black Law Dictionary, fourth edition. You see this word common law? It's got two words, right? Common, one word, next word, law, two separate words, right? And then you'll read the definition and it'll tell you the definition of this word, common law, but it has no hyphen. Follow me. Watch this. Black Law Dictionary. Now you come over here. Common law. And then it comes down and is getting ready to change it, okay? Listen. Brother Drake.
As a compound adjective, common law is understood.
Pause, read it again.
As a compound adjective, common hyphenated law.
Read it again.
As a compound adjective, common hyphenated law.
So Black Law Dictionary. Trying to tell you now, when you add a hyphen. A hyphen in the word, you just created what? A compound adjective. See, Moors thought I was making this stuff up, they said, man, Jay Bay on there talking crazy about us, man, he making stuff up. I kept trying to tell you that Moorish American was what? An adjective. Then I turned around and told you Moorish American was a compound adjective, I don't make this stuff up. Your Moorish American teachers ain't teaching you this, but wait, let's go deeper. Let's talk about this hyphen. What is a compound adjective? We're looking up words, we becoming wordsmiths, we learning how to read tonight. Read means forensics. Right? Let's look it up. Listen, no.
A compound adjective is an adjective made up of more than one word. Compound adjectives are used to modify nouns and usually appear before the noun they modify. They can be made up of any number of words, but usually consist of two words. Hyphens are often used to link the words together to show that it is one adjective.
Alright, read it again.
A compound adjective is an adjective made up of more than one word. Compound adjectives are used to modify nouns and usually appear before the noun they modify. They can be made up of any number of words, but usually consist of two words. Hyphens are often used to link the words together to show that it is one adjective.
So a compound adjective, when you add that little hyphen, it totally changes the definition of the word and the usage of said word. Look at this last sentence. Hyphens. Are often used to link the words together to show that it is one adjective. So it became one adjective when you add the hyphen, listen. So if you add a hyphen. Now Moorish American became what? One adjective, oh, Moors thought I was making it up, see? Oh, I just waited for a little while, I said, let them talk smack about me first. Then I'm gonna come back and show them the reference point. You see? Oh, Jay Bay don't play, I, I do my research, I set y'all up, this is like chess. I set my pieces up. Y'all start talking smack and next you know it's checkmate, cause you didn't even see the move coming, cause you so arrogant, your ego's getting away. You won't take the time to look up words like I do. So these grand sheiks won't tell their students that Moorish American is an adjective. I just proved it from the Black's Law Dictionary, how you add, add a hyphen, create a compound adjective, cause all the Moors keep talking about, man, you need to know eight parts of speech. I can't tell the Moors know it. Look how simply I just looked this stuff up. Now let me say for the record, I used to be a Moorish American. I started studying twenty eighteen. I was a Moorish American all the year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. When the year twenty twenty-one rolled around and we signed our constitution, I said, okay, I gotta start merging out of this whole Moorish American theme, but it still have a hold on to me. I was like, I'm kinda, I, I, I think I'm still Moorish American, but I'm a Moorish national. But I've been told I'm Moorish American, so I'm transitioning, it's called a merger than an acquisition. I have to merge the entire year of the year twenty twenty-one, I was merging from being a Moorish American into being a Moorish national, and from a Moorish national into being a full-blown Moroccan. Period. Period, I had to go through a transition stage, all the Moors are gonna have to go through it, I had to go through it, I'm not sitting here chastising you, I'm telling you I went through it too. But I'm trying to course correct to teach the Moors what I found out when I did the research, cause Taj Sri Bay kept saying, don't believe me, do the research. I did the research and found out the Moorish American teachers was full of crap. Listen. Listen, I ain't done. I ain't done. Okay, look at this. Barack H. Obama knew the Moors kept saying the Moroccan flag been flying over here for ten thousand years. That ain't true. Which flag been flying over here ten, ten thousand years? That's the question, cause it ain't this one that says, question nineteen, what kind of flag is the Moorish? Question, that's a terrible question, by the way. The, the grammar's all of all, okay, response. It is a Moroccan red flag with a five-pointed green star in the center. Now I added this word Moroccan for the record, that way it could read cleaner. It says, response, it is a Moroccan red flag with a five-pointed green star in the center. Barack H. Obama knew that was BS. He knew that that flag, eh, belonged to the Kingdom of Morocco. Barack H. Obama was sitting in the Senate of Illinois and then the Senate of the United States, looking at treaties and dealing with international affairs with the Kingdom of Morocco. And any of the Moors can look at the Kingdom Morocco's constitution of the year twenty eleven, Article four, and see that the Kingdom Morocco's laid claim to this particular flag that's red with a five-pointed green star in the center, that's Article four. Of their constitution of twenty eleven. So Barack H. Obama knew the Moorish Science Temple was full of crap, that ain't your flag. You ain't got no flag, Moors don't have no flag that's calling themselves Moorish Americans, you ain't got no flag, you know what your flag is? The United States Stars and Stripes, straight up. That's it, stop claiming a flag that don't belong to you, I challenge all the grand sheiks to prove that the Kingdom Morocco recognizes Moors under that flag. Prove it, grand sheiks, to your students, you can't do it, you've been lying. I ain't done. Look at this right here. Question thirty-two, Brother Joseph.
Thirty-two, where is the Moroccan Empire? Response, northwest Amequim.
Timeout. Read it again.
Where is the Moroccan Empire? Response, northwest Amequim.
So you said you're American, while your questions keep talking about your Moroccan empire, that's the land. Then you turn around and say you're American, that's the first part, look at this, look how they're talking out loud, Moroccan empire for Moroccans, you turn around and say you're Americans. That don't make no sense, but look at this part right here, look at this lie. Like I said, I'm guilty of it too, I'm gonna prove it. Response, northwest Amequim. Guess what? I did the research. You can't find the word Amequim nowhere. It ain't in Etymology Dictionary. It's not in Oxford Dictionary. It's not in Merriam-Webster's Dictionary. It's not in American Standard Dictionary. It's not in the Bible. It's not in the Quran with a Q, or the Quran with a K, I don't care about the Quran with a K, cause the real Quran starts with a Q. It's not in the Torah. It's not in the treaties. It don't exist nowhere that's recognized universally except amongst who? Moorish American Temple Moors. They made this word up. I'm talking to the students right now, I'm challenging the students, find the word Amequim in any dictionary, and I ain't talking about your Urban Dictionary, cause you're finding the word for shizzle my nizzle in the same Urban Dictionary, but that ain't a word in real time. I don't wanna hear about your Urban dictionaries. Look up an unabridged, Amequim don't exist nowhere. No dictionaries. No treaties. And no religious books whatsoever, trust me, I searched the Bible. I searched the Quran with a Q. And I searched the Torah and the word Amequim don't exist nowhere. I challenge any grand sheik to prove to me Amequim is an actual word that's recognized in universal law. It don't exist, you've been lying to these Moors. Students need to look this up and challenge the grand sheiks. So how the hell you keep saying the empire of Morocco is Amequim, when Amequim ain't no different than saying Wizard of Oz. Amequim is Oz. It don't exist. It's made up, it's allegory. And that's exactly what it is, it's allegory. Moorish Americans been making up a lot of crap, you can't even find the word Moorish American in a dictionary. You can't find it in Oxford. Merriam-Webster's. Etymology, American Standard, any unabridged dictionary, you can't even find the word Moorish American. So you can't find Moorish American in the treaties, dictionaries. You can't find it in the Bible. You can't find it in the Quran with a Q. You can't find it in the Torah, you can't find Amequim nowhere, where does Moorish American get these words? They just making it up, you go on Google right now, look up Amequim, and ninety percent of the content coming from the Moorish Science Temple. You go on Google right now, look up a Mexum, and ninety percent of the content coming from the Moorish Science Temple. It's just made up. It's fairy tale. That's all it is. Allegory. This is sad. This last question, listen. This is, this is the one they're going, this, listen, man. Okay, good brother Joseph.
Thirty-four, what is the title given to our ruler in Morocco? Response, Sultan.
Okay, so the Moors are saying, what is our ruler? Where? In Morocco is the Sultan of Morocco and the Moorish American. But the Sultan's Moroccan. And he's the ruler over we as the Moors as Americans? No. Listen to my words. Is the Sultan American?
No.
No. Is the Sultan recognizing the land as being America? No. Even the Moorish Science Temple is saying the Sultan is overseeing the Empire of Morocco. The Moroccan empire is that. So if the Sultan, our ruler, is not American, then why the hell are the Moors saying they're American? You know why? Cause they've been sold out by these teachers telling their students, we're all Americans. But guess what? This is what you call what? Truth and falsehood strangely mixed. Cause the reality is politically speaking, the Moors are Americans, politically speaking, cause you're naturalized and adopted as American. But what is your pedigree? Noble said you're descendants of who? Moroccans. So Barack H. Obama's looking at these one-on-one saying, this is a bunch of crap. Ain't no such thing as a Mexum. It ain't no such thing as Moorish American, and if Moorish American is a word, it's an adjective and not a noun. So how the hell can it be a nationality? It ain't a noun. Listen, Resolution seventy-five of nineteen thirty-three, all the Moors know about this. This is what already bad publications keeps pumping out to the Moors, telling the Moors that they're Moorish Americans. The civic Moors are doing this. And the temple Moors are doing this too. So Philadelphia put the hat, the hatling in the word Moorish American in this bill, this resolution. From Philadelphia. Moorish American, right there. And Moorish American is luck and adjective. Listen, remember I showed y'all this, this, this bill right here, this act?
Yeah.
From Illinois? Right? In twenty fifteen, Illinois compiled statutes, right? Chapter eight oh five, Business Organization, eight oh five I L C S one ten for Religious Corporation Act. All the Moorish American temples are listed under a what? Religious corporation. This is Illinois statute. Right? I showed the Moors this. Listen. What do I have up here? Some more information. Uh-huh, I'm doing my research, cause somebody told me, don't believe me doing the research. I'm doing the research. Check this out. This is another bill from Illinois. It's recent too. Here, brother Dre, right here.
Bill text, um.
Illinois.
Illinois. Um HB thirty-seven, six-six, twenty-three, uh, two thousand twenty-three through two thousand twenty-four, one hundred and third General Assembly.
Alright, so the General Assembly, the legislative branch of Illinois, is putting together what? A House Bill. Right? In the year twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four, look where the bill is titled. Oh, Dre.
Uh, bill titled, Creates the Illinois Moorish American Family Commission Act.
See that? You see how Illinois is writing the word Moorish American down? Moorish American with a hyphen. Legislation in Illinois, where they claim Noor Dua Lee is from. Look how the Illinois is putting your name in statutes. Illinois is telling you the truth that you're an adjective. You see? So remember we learned about an adjective. The adjective becomes one adjective, but technically the adjective does what? Comes before the noun, so the noun's American. So they say these Moors are actually Americans. Now, that's your surname. You know how women get, uh, uh, married? They hyphenate their name? There's your hyphenated name, right there, Moors. American. That's your surname. That's your adopted name, that these Moorish Americans keep forcing you to say you're American. I challenge any of the students to go tell, uh, Kujo Ill, hey, man, aren't we Moroccans? Kujo gonna snap on you. He's a sellout. He don't wanna tell the Moors they're actually Moroccans, period. Ain't no Moorish American. It's an adjective, but wait. It's a bill, right? Look at this. Read that, uh, good brother Dre.
One hundred and third General Assembly, State of Illinois, twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, House Bill thirty-seven, sixty-six. Introduced by Rep. Representative Justice Slaughter. Synopsis as introduced. New act, Creates the Illinois Moorish American Family Commission Act. Creates the Illinois Moorish American Family Commission to advise the Governor and General Assembly as well as work directly with state agencies to improve and expand existing policies, services, programs, and opportunities for Moorish American families, children, and adults. And guide the efforts of and collaborate with state agencies, including, but not limited to, the Department on Aging, the Department of Children and Family Services, the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, the Department of Corrections, the Department of Human Services, the Department of Healthcare and Family Services, the Department of Public Health, the Department of Transportation, the Department of Employment Security, and others. Sets forth provisions concerning the members of the commission, funding, addresses, and reports, and oversight. Provides that administrative, technical, and staffing support for the commission shall be provided by the Commission on Equity and Inclusion effective immediately.
Uh-huh, so what's happening? Moorish American, which is an adjective, is not a nationality, cause it's not a noun. And Illinois is putting it down as precise, right? Precisely, they're writing it intentionally like this. Cause they ain't recognizing the Moors as a noun. They're recognizing you as an adjective. It describes what? Americans, so they're passing an American statute for these people proclaiming to be Moorish Americans. But Moorish American ain't nothing but listed as a church. Listen, you gotta understand why I showed y'all this first. Cause it's about Religious Corporation Act. It's all about who? Uh, read this, good brother Dre.
Section thirty-five, any church, congregation, or society formed for the purposes of a religi-, uh, religious worship may become incorporated in the manner following, by electing or appointing according to its usages or customs at any meeting held for that purpose, two or more of its members as trustees, wardens, and vestrymen, or such other officers whose powers and duties are similar to those of trustees as shall be agreeable to the usages and customs, rules, or regulations of such congregation, church, or society. And may adopt a corporate name and upon the filing of the affidavit, as hereinafter, provided it shall be and remain a body politic, uh, body politic and corporate by the name so adopted. Source P A eighty-one fifteen oh nine.
So the Moorish Science Temple is listed as what? Any church. It's a church. It don't matter whether it's a Baptist church, Moorish American church, Nation Islam mosque. It don't matter. They're all listed under one single word called church. And everybody in the church is all what? Americans. Regardless of your religious status, it ain't got nothing to do with nationality. It must be a separation of what? Church and state. Church and state separation. So who's the state looking out for these church people? It was Illinois looking out for the Moorish Americans. Moorish Americans are claiming they what? Sovereign government, like they equal with the Illinois, and they're not. First of all, you're an adjective under a church. You ain't no state. No one gets a nationality through a church. Baptist is not a nationality. Jehovah Witness is not a nationality. Scientology is not a nationality. Mormon is not a nationality. Even Jew is not a nationality. It's a religious organization. They say their state is what? Israel. The religion is what? Jew. This is what they're saying. I'm keeping it real. So Moorish American also falls under a church status as an adjective. Describing who? Americans. Baptists are Americans. Methodist are Americans. Jehovah Witness are Americans, and Moors are Americans who've been naturalized. And the United States is listing you as an adjective. That's what makes it worse, and you don't know it. We gotta tell the truth. I used to be a Moorish American. I was using Moorish American terms. Let me prove it to you. Remember I told the Moors that AIPAC will be changing their constitution? So this is AIPAC's constitution, right? This is our current constitution. Let me show you how I still had Moorish American mentality when we was first writing our constitution February twenty-eight, twenty twenty-one. Guess what we put in our preamble? I'm gonna show you that even I made mistakes, but I'm mad enough to admit my mistakes and then correct it. Cause AIPAC will be changing their constitution drastically. Listen. Here, brother Dre.
Preamble, we the Moors in Morocco, the mothers and sons of northwest of Mexum, northwest of Kibon, the North Gate, and standing on our five points of light.
Pause. So in our constitution and preamble, we're using this fictitious word, a Mexum. You see how I pointed out our mistakes? I'm mad enough to point out the mistakes that even AIPAC made when we drafted this constitution because we were transitioning out of the mentality, we were brainwashed to think that a Mexum was an actual place. Then we foolishly turned around and said, of northwest of Kibon. Where's the Kibon? Africa. Are we standing on Africa? No. Africa is across the Atlantic Ocean. But we said in our constitutional preamble that we were standing on Akibon. Nah, we just simply in the Empire of Morocco. So even AIPAC has made mistakes that we gotta go back and correct. I'm mad enough to say that. We all got to course correct and get out this Moorish American BS. We all been hoodwinked, bamboozled, and led astray. This word right here is for Africa, and this word right here don't even exist. It is in our constitution. The foolishness even of AIPAC. So we can point the finger at ourselves and say, you know what? We messed up. We're gonna strike it from our constitution. Right? It's just gonna be a revised, amended constitution. This is what it means to grow as a people. To go through varying stages of advancement. To recognize the flaws and errors in your own ways. Cause that's the only way you can tell somebody else they made a mistake, cause you recognize the mistakes in yourself. It starts with self. Noor Dua Lee said to, said to, Noor Dua, Noor Dua Lee said to do what? Study yourself. I constantly study me, and by studying me, I see my errors, and then I turn around and see everybody's errors because oftentimes I was the teacher. I turn around and talk people this very word right here, a Mexum, like it existed, and it ain't nothing but Oz. It don't exist. We gotta correct. Course correct. So either you course correct, or you gonna force somebody to cor- correct your course through what? Moroccan laws. Cause Moroccans, when they start to enforce Moroccan laws against all Moor subjects and proteges within the territory. Moroccan state's not gonna allow Moors to keep this propaganda machine going on. Because we Moroccans can't allow ourselves to look like we're complicit, right? That we enabling the fact that Moors, Moorish Science Temple and civic Moors keep calling other Moors Americans. So at some point, we gotta say, look, timeout. We gonna have to create some laws or some regulations that starts to shut this down. Cause it's propaganda. If you go back and look at the Rights of Indigenous People of the year two thousand seven. Go to Article eight. What does Article eight say? Section two. It talks about there can be no propaganda in dealing with indigenous people. Go back and look it up. The Rights of Indigenous People, two thousand seven, Article eight, section two, can be no propaganda. Look it up. So we can't be complicit as Moroccans to keep turning a blind eye to the fact that Moorish Americans keep telling black people that they're Moorish Americans. That's a lie. In the Treaty of Madrid of eighteen eighty, right, the Madrid Convention of eighteen eighty. You go down to Article fifteen. Even the United States of America knows that you are Moroccan. I'm gonna show it again. This is Article fifteen, right? Right protections in Morocco, not America, for Morocco and Moroccan. In the footnotes, the United States recognizes your Moroccan nationality. And they were trying to strike it from the Madrid Convention. So therefore, the Madrid Convention is by who? Moroccans. More specifically, the Treaty of Madrid was more specifically by what? Article fifteen. They were striking Moroccan nationality from Article fifteen. That way, if Article fifteen was talking about who? Celtics of Morocco. So the Celtics are who? Moroccan. The Celtics are who? Moroccans of Morocco. Listen. Go back to the treaty. Treaty Act of Ours. Act of Ours, nineteen oh six. The Moorish officials are Moroccans. And the Moorish subjects are who? Who are the Moorish subjects? Who are the Moorish subjects? Listen. Chapter four, right off the top, said what? Uh, brother Dre.
Article fifty-nine, as soon as the terrative shall have been put into regular operation with regard to Moor subjects. The representatives of the powers at tangiers shall, shall subject their citizens, subjects, and proteges in the empire to the application thereof.
Pause. So who are the Moorish, who are the Moorish subjects? Okay, France will tell you. Moroccans. The Moroccans and French. The subjects are Moroccans. You go back to eighteen eighty. Go back to eighteen eighty. Article fifteen, the subjects are Moroccans. And the United States and Mohammed the Fifth was trying to strike your what? Your Moroccan nationality from the text in the Madrid Convention. See how easy this is? You know what this is called? Studying words. You see? So as I started to close out, listen, Moors, cause I started just talking about taxes, right? I told you, I said, I'm gonna show you the back end and say, yeah, the United States owes taxes, but we gotta bring it back to the origin. Where do we start at? Nationality. Because you gotta understand what? You, you gotta understand the four elements of a contract. If you don't understand the basic four elements of a contract, number one, who are the parties to the contract? Number two, who is superior and who is inferior in the contract? So who's superior in the contract when you're Moroccan? It's the Moroccans. Who's inferior? The Americans. Box three, what are the terms and conditions of the contract? Well, right now, we're talking about specifically what? Taxes. So the terms and conditions are set up by box one and two. So if you're Moroccans, now you're superior, and superiors, the sovereign state of Moroccans can now under that term create the conditions now to enforce. Box four, how do you enforce the contract? You enforce it by collecting taxes and enforcing it when they don't pay through what? Right here. Consular court. Right? Consular court is how you enforce it. It's right there. That's the jurisdiction. So I said all that to say this. As we start to read, right, the case, right, right, what do I have up here? Page two oh three of the judgment. Page two oh three of the judgment, France versus United States of America, nineteen fifty-two. Right, you come down. And we start to read to get into this. And you also, you wanna talk about Moroccan taxes? Well, you ain't claiming to be Moroccan, so how you gonna collect taxes? You gotta be Moroccan first to be able to collect taxes. Right? So you gotta understand, I went through all that exercise first to tell you, what is the end result? When you finally start checking all the boxes, check this box, check this box, check this box from origin of Moroccan all the way you finally get to a point where you can now collect taxes. But if you don't check the first boxes, you'll never collect taxes. Ain't no use in talking about taxes till first you know your dang on nationality. And Barack H. Obama told you go back and read the dang on charter. So before I close out, let's go back to the charter in honors to good brother Barack H. Obama and read chapter eleven in its entirety. From the top, your brother Dre.
Um, Declaration Regarding Nonself-Government Territories. Article seventy-three. Members of the United Nations which have or assume responsibilities for the administration of territories whose peoples have not yet attained a full measure of self-government recognize the principle that the interests of the inhabitants of these territories are paramount and accept as a sacred trust the obligation to promote to the utmost within the system of international peace and security established by the present charter, the well-being of the inhabitants of these territories, and to this end. A, to ensure with due respect for the culture of the peoples concerned, their political, economic, social, and educational advancement, their just treatment and their protection against abuses. B, to develop self-government, to take due account of the political aspirations of the peoples, and to assist them in the progressive development of their free political institutions according to the particular circumstances of each territory and its peoples and their varying stages of advancement. C, to further internet, to further international peace and security. D, to promote constructive measures of development, to encourage research, and to cooperate with one another and when and where appropriate with specialized international bodies with a view to the practical achievement of the social, economic, and scientific purposes set forth in this article. And E, to transmit regularly to the Secretary General for information purposes, subject such at such limitation as security and constitutional considerations may require statistical and other information of a technical nature relating to economic, social, and educational conditions in the territories for which they are respectively responsible other than those territories to which chapters twelve and thirteen apply.
Right, so Article seventy-three is about the Moors needing to declare their independence. But when you declare your independence, you must also declare what? Their nationality. So over a hundred years, the Moors kept declaring they're who? Moors Americans. Wrong name in the contract, you can't be independent under that name. It don't exist in the treaties. It don't exist in dictionaries. It don't exist in the Bible, the Quran, or the Torah. It don't exist nowhere on planet Earth except amongst who? Members of a church. And the people need to understand that even in the charter, Barack H. Obama understood that in section E of Article seventy-three, it said what? Constitutional considerations may require? So if you're declaring your independence, what should it follow up with? A dang on what? Constitution? This is what now extends your abstract into the properly written instrument commonly known as a constitution. So in order for us to collect taxes, read the constitution and through the constitution, we become parties to our treaties. When we become parties to our treaties, now we enforce what? Moroccan laws and Moroccan regulations and also do what? Collect taxes, but what type of taxes? Moroccan taxes. And when the United States don't pay up, we enforce it through what? Counselor Court. And you can't do that as a Moors American. I am with that. It's my.